Okay.
All right, we're on the air. What's... Is there... We're on the air now. Is there a sound issue?
Uh, no. We should... So, there's a ceiling mic.
Okay. This week. Okay. So, we're on the air for our May 20 show up. Work session. Council Coaster Body is online, as I understand it. And our topic to begin is the CIP project with engineer Jennifer Garbley.
Thank you. All right. We got a lot of projects to talk about. Engineering is working on all kinds of things. So, we're gonna jump in. Maybe?
Oh, is it on? Nope. I'm so sorry. That is my fault.
Okay. So, make storm water. We are super close. Right now, only thing we gotta finish up is the pond. So, we're looking at probably a couple of weeks out. I would say June, we'll actually do a final walkthrough, and this project will be ready in half. So, super exciting. The pond basically just needs to be planted. So, we're really... We're putting in irrigation, temporary irrigation, to last for about two years, to establish all the plants. And fences going in. You can see the posts there. It'll go all the way around the west side of the pond. And then we have the lovely bank on the east side that's gonna support people not being in the pond or whatever. But we are right there, which is exciting.
So, I drove over there today and looked at it from Kelvin Street. And I took a picture. Somebody was working back in there. There's a railing?
It's a fence.
It's a fence. Okay.
The post has been installed.
Okay.
The fence.
And there will be a fence.
It'll be a fence.
Okay. Okay. But it's on the east side? No? It's on... You're saying it's on the west side? I felt like it was on the east side.
It has a little bit on that end by Kelvin. It's kinda to make sure that area is... But on the major part of the pond, which is much further down, closer to Bellford Street, it's... There's not gonna be a fence on that backside.
And are you... You're planting plants this... Now? Or you're waiting till fall?
No, no, no. We'll plant them now. It has an irrigation system that goes in. This is a hard area to access. So, it's got a temporary irrigation system to establish the plants for about two, three years.
Exciting.
Yes. We're not waiting till fall here. This is gonna get signed off. Jen can't wait.
What kind of plants do you use for stormwater retention?
Typically, there are plants that wanna uptake metals and things like that from your water. I don't have the exact name of the plant that we are planting in this project. But we're also doing a bunch of trees in this area as well. So, it'll be shaded all the way along the area. But it'll look something like Oak Street facility. So, bushes, you know, kind of grasses, things that establish that don't mind also like hot weather, but then don't mind having their roots wet.
And the trees will provide some shade to help cool water off as they grow?
Yeah. Exactly.
So, water comes into this, and it's going on to Roswell?
Yes. So, the middle here has... This is actually... But this right here is actually two coalworks that run underneath this area. So, it's creating two ponds. This is heading out towards Kelvin. This will head out towards Hillside. So, our pipelines coming into here. There's a four bay, which allows sediment to settle out. That makes it easier for us to come in and clean that four bay because it's solid on the bottom. And then the plants in there will help take up. This is storage stuff. This is providing 100-year-old storage event if something were to happen. This will connect the Oak Street facility. So, there right now is a plug in Harrison and 31st Street. We'll pull that as soon as this project's over. Then we'll flow.
We need a flood. You said there's a flood... A plug?
A plug.
Plug? Oh, okay.
Yes. We did phase one, right? We did this first phase, the south phase. We had to plug it because we had nowhere for the water to go. So, there's a plug so it could go up in through the Harrison pipeline. That will... That plug will be removed, and it'll flow through here, through this pond, and then to Roswell.
And we don't... I mean, I gather from the fencing, we don't particularly want public walking and going through here?
No.
Okay.
We do not. This is not a... This is not... It is tight back there. If you go all the way back, once it's planted, it's... Our crews will only have access from the south and then north when it's fully established.
I've heard chatter a few times over the years about trying to make Roswell an inaccessible area. Is that something you think is worth exploring?
Haven't looked into it.
Yeah? Okay.
I would say we've had some really initial conceptual discussions about it. There is... Roswell's a pretty... That's right there. There's a much bar. That extends further than there. I think that's something that we'll take a look at.
Great. That's kinda where I was going with that. Great. Glad to hear it. Thanks.
Okay.
Well, I can't just... For the record, I cannot see Council Coaster Body. So, will you tell us if he holds up his hand or anything? Okay. Thank you.
Washington area.
Thank you, Ms.
Yes. We've completed Edmond. We're prepping to pave Washington from 35th to 27th. I do have a completion date of fall 2025, and that's because we are gonna wait to do all our plantings until September on this project. But the majority of the concrete work should actually be wrapping up in the next like two weeks. And we are planning on paving. We should be able to get our striping in. And we have one little area by 27th and Washington that's kinda lingering a little bit with a private property owner. So...
But we're getting close.
Arden Long Warren. It is fully under construction right now. We've got all the stormwater work just about wrapped up. The wastewater work is completed. Water work is close. We have one other little line that we're abandoning that we didn't realize. So, we're adding just a little bit of scope there to complete that water. It's a four-inch water line that really should go. So, we gotta tie over some service lines to the new line that's been installed. Getting close. They have started doing the mountable curb. It is... It's narrow. It's narrow. We plan on going to the NDA in June just to give a little bit more information to the neighborhood of what's happening, how much longer is it gonna be. Definitely are getting some comments. People are like, "What's going on? What's happening?" Flyers have gone out, things like that. The website is updated. I think the harder part about this project is it's narrow. It's much more narrow than like Washington project was. So, it really impacts people coming in and out. Because if we're working, it's down to one lane and gotta get people in and out around the construction crews.
So, I also went there today. And the mountable curbs look awesome, I think. But so the idea is people will park over them, go over them to park? So, what's below the curb is driveline, not parking. And if they're parking...
And walk and bike. This is a shared road. So, there's no parking on the asphalt. So, flyers being drafted to actually... Community I highly use this one as we get further down the road. But they are moving quickly. We anticipate actually October to be completed with this project.
And you put... Will you put sheriffs on the street?
Yeah. I've already shared there sheriffs on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the idea.
I think, you know, we're gonna have a middle housing discussion at some point. But I think in the comments, we got about 29th. In frontage, you know, 29th. I like those mountable curbs. And I kinda like to see us maybe think about that for 29th? Not... I guess that's a discussion for another day.
Yeah. I think it'll be a good example of a different type of sherro... A shared street that we can do within our community. And so, I think the mountable curb is gonna be neat because they're gonna still be able to park up on those side streets like they're doing now, but it'll be defined a little bit better. All right. Our street maintenance program. So, we've got a grind-in and light. It is out to bid. We're expecting bids June 5th, which is exciting. At the moment, we got 4.7 miles. We'll see if we have budget to actually do all 4.7 miles. We'll see. The product would be completed by fall 2025. I will be using the budget for both years by any time because we'll be at the end next June. And I will have a hard time getting another project out before that. So, this is the project that we're planning for this budget cycle. I mean, this budget cycle. So, not just one year's first. So, that's where I know I've got at least quite a bit of money there this time. And then we also have our cracked ceiling. And we received the bid, and they will be working at the end of June. And we got about four miles of slurry seal happening.
And that's our... That's today in our consent agenda.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. So, yeah. The contractors already reached out, and they would like to do the like last two... Last week in July, first week in August, which is great for us as far as that goes.
But you said June a minute ago. You mentioned July.
I meant July. Okay. If I said June, I mentioned July. I'm really sorry.
That's okay.
If you can't fund all four miles, how do you decide which segments you prioritize?
I think it'll depend on... I'd probably look at a cluster of like there's a few in a certain area that we can remove. Otherwise, I'd like to leave clusters because that's more efficient. At the moment, though, I'm... My goal is to actually try to fund all of it. So, we'll see. I was just... There was an error in the bid that I just found out today, and I went, "Oh, hmm. That's a little bit more than we anticipated." So, I might have to pull out something. We'll see.
Yeah. I do the... Part of the reason I say this is I've seen in the sparrow site we're doing some grinding and light. I think be responsive to neighbors there that that project might be... A nice show could be.
Yeah. I don't wanna touch Island Station. They... We removed the slurry seal last time. So, I would agree. Like, we need to make sure that moves forward.
Jen, what is the calendar window for slurry seal? How long do you have? Two months, three months, four months?
It's all weather-based. So, I would say it really depends on the weather. If you get a nice warm weather, you can go a little bit later. But for sure, I would say June through like September. Sometimes I think we can hit May, which we did last year. We actually got done a little bit earlier. We really... The only problem with that is like it was right around when school wasn't out yet. So, that's kind of the bigger problem. So, getting out from school before school's closed is really what we want it done. It's just a little bit less impactful to the community when we don't have like buses to worry about and everything.
That was a big issue in Washington, yeah.
Yeah. Really, that's why we pushed for actually... No, it's gotta be after July 1 and before September 1 in the contract. And we got that, which was nice. It's a different company this year, but one in the bid, which is fine. We've used them in the past, and they've done a good job.
Is that map in our... That's not in our package.
No. It is not in your package. It's in slide. And we're gonna start... We've got a... We've got a map going that we're putting together for farmers markets that says what all the construction happening this summer. So, the slurry seal, the grind-up pave, the Harvey Street, Ardwall North, and then this upcoming King Road project. So, we've got quite a bit.
You guys get going on?
Also, I wanna say one of our spot programs is adding speed cushions to Wichita. And so, that is in this bid for this project to be added in order to complete that spot program proposal.
So, Wichita is getting repaid in this?
No, it's getting four...
It's getting speed cushions.
Speed cushions. Yeah. Hopefully.
Economy's a scale though, to include it as part of this project.
I'm sorry?
Economy's a scale.
Sure. Sure. Sure.
Otherwise, there's no other speed cushions throughout this project. That's... That's the only one that's been added.
And sorry you said this, sorry you said this, Jen, but the speed cushions, were those identified through a spot application?
Yeah, it's a spot. Proposal. And as long as the bid for that work is under 25K, then it'll move forward.
Love it.
So. Has everybody walked the new sidewalk? All right, we've completed it. Right now, we're doing punch, we're getting ready to do our final punch list and like close out the project. We have a ADA parking space that doesn't fit where it was originally. So it's getting a new location that should be stalled shortly. What do you think?
What do you think about the tree wells? How are, how are they going to work?
I need, we need to go through a, oh, winter to really identify that question. But I think it turned out really nice. I think it looks great. What an improvement to the area as far as that goes. So yeah, I'm excited to see it. And then we'll utilize this information for our main streets, streetscape project that we're getting ready to get started. Okay, lots of stuff going on in Monroe Greenway. So we've come to you for the updated funds that we won for East Washington Monroe segment, which is from 37th to Lynnwood. We're still anticipating at this point, we're going out to bid in summer of 2026. That is on ODOT's process. So we'll see how that works. It's out of our hands, but that's still, they say is the, we're, they're going to make it, we'll see. Central Monroe Greenway, we've completed the water pipeline successfully. It was the first time we've done a pipe burst on a water line. And so we didn't have to do the work at night. It was.
Actually, that was the under 224 thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it went well and we got a great bid for it as well. Right, the next proposal, award you're going to see is for a engineer to help us design central. Right now, we're, we're actually negotiating prices. And we plan, I think the next June meeting will be with an award. That's what we plan on. So it's coming up really quick. Our goal is to have a bid out the next following summer. So it'll move quick.
And Jen, ODOT's work on that central segment, that's happening this summer.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, started seeing, staging along 224 and a little bit.
There's staging, they started already putting up their traffic control devices. And I had to be like, uh-uh, I don't have a permit for that on Milwaukee property. They actually bolted my new sidewalk, our new sidewalk. But anyways, I'm not, I'm not protective of it at all. But anyways, yes, they are moving forward. They, we've been coordinating because we're paving Washington Street. And they're like, when's that happening? And I said, we're, we're looking at end of May, early June for our paving work. Which means that it'll be open for them to detour when they have to close for their project. So, yes. And remember, that's a, they're going to start with the signal. A signal at Monroe has to be completely redone with our new improvements. It'll be right in, right out. And then they will finalize with paving all the way through that intersection.
And will it actively make that intersection narrower?
We will have a median, yeah, there will be a full-on median in the middle. So only bikes and pedestrians can go through that intersection when we're done.
Right.
Is the median going to be large enough that someone could stand there?
Yes.
In a red light?
I don't know if we want them standing there. The light should be signaled, but yes, technically it would be, it's pretty wide. I mean, it's a, it's a full one lane width, right? So yes, there, there will be, but I don't think there's a push button in the middle of the median to like stop and like re-trigger.
Yeah.
But it is large enough that you could stand there if you wanted to. If I want. Oh, we did get the speed reduced through there down to 35. So that was a win.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
All the way to pass.
Harrison.
Oh, just to Harrison.
Harrison to Oak, bad stretch.
Oh, that's good.
That's the main part, yeah, Harrison to Oak.
But not around, not, what's the speed coming around the?
50.
Really?
Yes.
When they're coming off of McLaughlin onto the curve, it's 50, then down to 35?
Yes. And that will be 50 to after Oak Street.
And we talked about speed, Jen.
Yeah, all the time.
Would that go on this intersection or have we talked about where those might be? Is this been introduced?
No, this is ODOT's. We would not put our speed. This is, this is an ODOT facility, so it's not our right of way.
We are considering though, through, through the PD.
Yeah.
Exploring that, but we have not gotten to talking about specific intersections yet. I also, on that speed element, I remember, I mean, a year and a half ago, we, I think council wrote a letter to ODOT talking about speed. And I remember their kind of pushback at the time was, well, there's work coming. So I wonder if this, the.
I mean, the letter did help in the sense that all of a sudden they were, they thought they were going to, they were told us where they were going to waste the speed study. And they did it actually last summer. So that's how I got it reduced to 35.
Okay, great.
But just that section.
And then do they do a, I mean, there's typically like education around that, like reduce speed ahead, reduce speed ahead.
They will have, yeah, anytime you have to reduce, they'll have flags as far as the, to draw people's attention that it is 35. They have not seen that installed yet. I've signed all the paperwork that says, yes, we want to move forward and yes, we should do this. So it's in ODOT's court at this point. So Harvey Street improvements is out to bid. We're expecting those in June. And this is a best value contract, so we will have to review proposals. And then we will open the actual bid for planning coming council July 8th. Bring our special session that's been created for consent to award for our contractor. So we're looking at a summer start date and then complete next year. The PGE has done all their work and Lumen is completed. So contractor is like ready to go. Like we have no conflicts at the moment to move forward, which is exciting.
I noticed today when I went over to go look at Ardenwall North, that it looked like PGE was replacing some poles on 29th. But I know from what they've been doing, some of that in Island Station too, just replacing the most worn-out poles. So it's not like necessarily adjacent ones. But I do hope that they talk to you when they're doing that about, you know, do we want them going back always in the same place?
Um, I mean, at this point, they're allowed to do maintenance work. So if they deem a pole that needs to be, these will have to let us know. If it's buried like those. At this point, I don't, I don't know about this particular one.
In context with their TSB, those sidewalks will be the LTS2 once they're done? Do you imagine?
I would imagine because it's curbed case, even though it's a low volume, at least a few, we can do at least a few. And it's only, we're only putting it on one side. So does that 42nd go all the way up to Johnson Creek?
Yeah. Or are we giving that? To how, where we, you did it before.
So we didn't, part of the project, we didn't do a grind-in and lay. And I just, that road is not in great shape. So we're, we're facing that. We're also putting in a RFP at 12 seconds. Oh, no, 42nd and Roswell. So just signed the paperwork for the easement, got agreement from the property owner. So that's all moving forward. Yeah. Which is exciting, really. Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, so that's going in. This has a bunch of water work on it. We have a little bit of wastewater, so it's got a little bit of everything wrapped up.
Will you do, will you maintain the speed cushions that are on 42nd? And will you add those to Harvey as well? So the whole line is?
Not doing speed cushions on Harvey. There was not a speed issue on Harvey when we checked the idea. But we, but we will be doing sharrows and we will be doing green paint all the way along this to show that path as far as that goes. It's kind of 29th. How we did it through the intersections to kind of like demonstrate where the bike way is going.
Yeah.
So you will see, so you'll see more markings than we've typically done on projects. And we kind of, I mean, kind of what we did on 29th, we're kind of pulling that through.
Yeah.
This project as well.
Okay. I appreciate the markings on 29th. I don't think, like, I think our standard should be higher than 29th.
Sure.
But I appreciate that.
It's also, they'll be parking still on one side. So it's going to feel narrower when we add all that infrastructure. So I think it's going to slow people down even more still. But yeah, there was an actual like speeding issue that we felt we needed to identify as there was on 42nd. Okay, King Road, you've seen probably some road work happening out there. This is actually Northwest National. They're preparing for our project and they're moving a conflict that they have with the two-inch gas line. We're working with them. They have another, we have another conflict with their eight-inch gas line, but we've come up with a different. They're going to help us modify some of our storm catch basins that they're going to pay for during construction. So they didn't have to move the actual eight-inch pipeline. So we're working on agreement with them. And we're anticipating being out to bid end of June. I've got my fingers grasped. It might be early July, but going out to bid early June. This will also be, this will be a four-week advertisement and then we'll have a best value again with this project. We've already got preproof. So. See you.
We need to think the construction would start.
Okay, we go end of June, four weeks into July. We're not going to have this to you until probably end of August, beginning of September. I would say we're starting kind of late October and then we're going to let it go a full year after that.
Council President, I know you wrote to me about a question you had on the King Road design. I don't know if you want to ask that to Jen or more broadly, kind of ask as there are, as this design is complete or largely complete. Sort of when we have those questions, Jen, you know, what's the outreach looking like as we head towards construction of this project?
Public? Outreaches, hey, this, yeah, it's going to be good to find them, that the contractor, who the contractor is. We will probably do a booth, kind of a little mini open house. Like, hey, do you have any questions? Here's the contractor. Please get on our mailing list so we can give you regular updates. The goal is to have, this will be two lanes of traffic. So we'll take one lane to do the work on either side. We'll do one way and then they'll do the other side. Most likely, the contractor could change that slightly up. The idea is they have to maintain two lanes of traffic. Except for during maybe commute, I mean, not commute hours, low traffic, they might be able to do a little bit of flagging if they need to. But not during those heavy times with a lot of traffic.
I know two flags, one, the, around the middle housing that we've been seeing near King Road. There are some neighbors that are fighting for a spot program or a rapid flushing. So I'd be curious, I think that spot grant will go in separately, but I think they were asking about.
What if it's?
They actually submitted it and Audi already wrote back and I think said it is a part of the King Road project. It's the crossing, keep asking your next question and then I'll figure out.
It's near, I think it's, it's not Stanley, but it's going up towards.
Home is the, home, so I'm installing an RFP at home.
It's at King and Hall.
King and Hall. So yeah, that's been in the works for a while. We got actually a request from a community member that was, I think visually impaired. And so we added it to the King Road project log, so yes.
The world's fastest spot program, project approval, application, and it's done.
So it's going to take another year to get it installed, but that's okay.
Okay.
But yes.
That was intersection one. Other one was Stanley. I know that I commented on this 90%. Didn't see it in 100. The intersection there is like an off-kilt street. And I know for that to be one of our greenies, there's no like easy transition to either bike or walk across that street. And I'm wondering how.
We're putting a median.
What that will, the median's like off, so it's, I know there are other streets. I think there's this Portland green, right? They kind of have side components to make it easier to do a turn.
I'm sorry, where they have what?
They have like a side street, I forget the, I'll pull up the Portland street. But they have like a side bike lane drawn out so you can come and turn. Some of these roads aren't quite even. But the median looks like hard to access. Are people getting up on the sidewalk and going over the median or?
Well, yes, because the sidewalks are going to be, I mean, they have two side pass lanes that are going on King. So those are all bike and pedestrian friendly as far as that goes. We can't put an RFP there because we're too close to Wichita. So, yes, so this is, so we're putting in a median at that spot. There's also a bus stop nearby there too. So it's definitely a complicated area, but.
But so I think, Council President, it would be, you'd come down Stanley, you would, you would mount the multi-use path to ride a little bit to the east, then cross that to the median, correct, Jen? And then back to.
Okay, all right, maybe we'll follow up or I'll follow up on that one.
Sure.
Sure. I know we have limited right of way in that area. So that's also one of the tricky spots for that intersection. Are the King Road plans online? They should be.
I can send you the link. I saw, this is where I saw.
I screenshotted it instead of.
The 100% are not, so it'd still be like at 90 then because the 100% I haven't posted yet. I don't receive them. I've had a few more comments come through that were addressing. So Waverly Heights, we're prepping for bid documents for construction. Our biggest holdup on this project is, this is a sewer project that's in the back of.
Everybody's yard.
Everybody's yard. It's actually getting all the, all the easements drawn up and completed. We had some, we're still working on those. And it's, it's just a little bit slow going when you have to get those permanent easements finalized. So as soon as those are finalized, then we will go out to bid. I'm hoping that's end of summer and we can do this in the fall. Most of the work is lining existing system, which means it's less impactful. Can you run this? UV liner through, it helps provide structurally sound the actual pipe. First, we'll clean it out with any roots invasion that has happened through the pipeline. And then there's a couple of spot repairs where we actually have to open cut and get in there. But otherwise, most of it's lining.
So once you start, it's how, any months?
Oh, it's, it's pretty fast, actually. The lining process is, I mean, all we got to do is probably only like a week or two.
Oh, really?
Spot repairs is probably another week for each spot repair. Those, those take longer. So being able to lining will speed up the project. I would say it's probably about a two-month project once we get started. Yeah.
Are people?
Yeah, we're not having a, we're not having a ton of pushback as far as, yeah, they understand, they don't want their, you know, don't want wastewater being an issue. So I don't think we're having that much trouble as far as that goes. It's just, it's still coordinating, you know, all the homeowners in that area, so. Stanley improvements. So for funding, this is being funded by URA from county, half of it about. And then we have design funds. And then in the next CIP, we're going to have to identify the construction funds for this project. Which I'll be looking at pretty close. We're looking at sidewalk on one side from King Road to Johnson Creek. That would be also, I'm hoping, an eight-foot side path for bikes and pedestrians. Right now, we're reviewing proposals to bring on consultant. And that, once we bring on that consultant, we're probably looking about 18 months before we go out to bid for construction. But it's, it's moving.
So we're doing that to move out, saying, bros?
Me too, yeah, we signed an IGA with the county that will move forward.
Okay.
So something's going to give, almost likely 40th and 42nd might have to push a little bit further out. I'm really curious what bids we'll get for Harvey and for King Road. We might have some savings there potentially if the economy is still where it's at two months ago. And if that's the case, we might go dedicate those funds to Stanley. Which would be great. I just don't know if I can get $2 million for it, so we'll see. But I think we could get closer. So I'll know more once we bid out those two big projects and then, um, we start building the new CIP. Waverly South and 26th Avenue has been on hold lately. This is our small little project that's being designed in-house by Hector. Um, the Harvey project for construction is gonna move to me and Hector's now gonna be able to start focusing on the design of this project. So, um, I know he started last week, which was great. We have survey work and all that things, um, but I'd like to build, we need to, we need to construct this next summer. The plan. I pushed it off too long.
I was gonna say, I've been telling.
It's.
I know.
Next summer, next summer, every summer, it's next.
We need to help use my staff. We need to help use staff. So when I lost Brandon, he, you know, Hector took over Harvey and, yeah. So I will finish it out for construction so we can focus on design. That's how we're gonna find out. Here's a picture of the inside of the Stanley reservoir.
Look at it.
Wow. Um, they are prepping right down to, uh, fill the tank. Is it gonna?
We started filling.
You did? Yep. A lot of exciting. Um, they're also already started working on the outside. There's a bunch of shrink wrap, it looks like, if you take a look at it. Um, we're anticipating this to be completed by this fall on the outside. And remember, it's gonna be this laser blue color when it's done on the outside. Anyways, that's a picture of the inside. We're all getting pretty excited. Okay, um, I just wanted to do a brief little update on our water engineering services. Um, we've tested well eight for PFOS. It has not come back at the moment. However, I didn't feel we actually ran the well long enough to know if it is gonna potentially have PFOS. So in the future, we're still gonna have to do a test to make sure. But at the moment, it, we didn't indicate PFOS in well eight. Um, our next step though is preparing to do a cleaning for well eight. Um, so we're still looking at, um, getting our consultant organized and kind of what is the best method forward that we should look at, um, doing for that cleaning. Our water treatment plant, we received a grant from PFOS study. Um, RH2 will complete that work. Um, so they are, um, getting ready. In the next 12 months, what we're gonna do is we're gonna, um, we're gonna pull on a treatment skid that's going to be looking at that water quality. And it's gonna be looking at what, what's happening with PFOS, what's happening with our VOCs and really trying to hone in what is the best technology we should use for that removal. Um, so that's, this is gonna probably take us about a year to kind of look at that data, figure what that's gonna happen and, uh, decide what path we need to move forward in actual, um, moving forward with design. So the good part is, we did get a notification from EPA and it looks like they're gonna extend compliance out to 2031 instead of 29, which gives us a few more extra years, which is fantastic. So means we're not quite at a rush, but it's still a fast timeline. Um, but it's exciting. Gives us a little bit more time to help find funding as well for these projects.
So the EPA has, as I understand it, has reduced the number of chemicals in the, in the, in the insisting, uh, regulation.
Yeah, they, they, they kept the PFOS, PFOS and PFON, those two, uh, members of the PFAS family, as, as regulated contaminants and they, the other four, they removed four. They called for the generation X, UBS chemicals. They've removed those. And I, my understanding is that that's probably gonna be challenged because once, uh, once a contaminant is regulated, it's just the same type of water after allow for it to be unregulated. So we'll see what happens.
Yeah, I know this will all be part of the study, but I would just be, I, I would be hesitant to, to, you know, remove those from our long-term goal.
Well, we, and we've, we've, we've.
Even if, even if we have a legal out.
We've evaluated.
I think the science supports it.
Yeah. Yeah, we've, we've evaluated where we are on those and those, those support that they were, uh, that they've said they want unregulated. We're, we're above those. We're fine.
We're fine with those. I think we still have the PFOS thing. Uh, our concrete tank improvements, um, we're evaluating the tank data for improvements. So, um, I've slowed that down, really started really focusing on more of the treatment plant, but we're gonna, we're gonna pick that up and we'll get that data and figure out what needs to happen with our 1.5 million gallon.
Is that the gal, the tank with the hero on it?
Okay.
Is that the only one that's concrete? The other two are metal?
Yes. Yeah, the, yes, the elevated tank and then Stanley. Yes. You're correct. Um, and then the new reservoir, um, the first thing we're gonna do is do hydraulic modeling to identify what zone we need to put that storage in. So, um, we're getting ready to start on that task. Kind of look at what our pressure zones are doing and then we'll start looking at where do we put this reservoir and have to look at that while we're talking about the water treatment plant because we need to correspond to what property we have and how do we best use our dollars. So that is what's happening. Water.
Um, yes. So do you think it's? I mean, we have, you know, we have the, we have the water tower and we have everything at 40th and Harvey except, and then the Stanley. Do you think it is potentially going on the campus at 40th and Harvey too? Or you really think it'll be somewhere else in town?
I think we need to do some analysis first before we look at that. Um, it's also foot, looking at the footprint. I think looking at that existing tank, it's 100 years old. That's really the life span typically to have a reservoir, a concrete reservoir. Um, so there's a lot of factors in there. But, um, a reservoir doesn't necessarily have to be elevated. We could also bury it. Um, yes, you have to put it in a pump station, um, with it, but it means you could have, you could bury it and put something above it, right? So potentially in some of our green spaces possibly, um, are leaving it open-ended at this point until we do that analysis. Um. The, the zones, so the elevated tank, right, it does a higher zone than the concrete there. So both zones are right there, so the transfer between them is actually kind of handy additions. Um, so I can see utilizing that campus for, um, other reservoir there, an additional reservoir. It's just kind of.
It's gonna, it's gonna be really tight because we're, and again, share with you, we're also looking at perhaps consolidating our treatment at that 40th and Harvey site that we would just, if we're gonna treat for PFOS, uh, we're gonna treat all at one, at, at one place. That we don't have to treat in sites that we have to do. I think one of the other things Jen mentioned that, you know, we're working on this hydraulic model and part of what we'll do as part of that process is look at how our pressure zones are set up and see if there's opportunities to make some readjustments in the pressure zones because we have a one, our pressure zone two is really, really big, a huge. You know, it's a lot smaller, so we wanna maybe take a look at one of those opportunities to adjust pressure zones and how that might impact where we, like, wanna place new storage as well.
We also thought how a lot of pressure reducing valves in between our zones, so it means how they transfer water between the zones. So we will be looking at that as well. So if we can move water easier, then it would make, it makes it easier to place that reservoir. Hard part is, is if it needs to be off of the new treatment plant, you want it close to the treatment plant so you have finished water in that, from that treatment. Otherwise, you're pumping from the treatment plant to that reservoir. So lots of stuff to figure out. But we're gonna start that modeling work here, uh, just sign the task order for, um, the consultant to move forward on it. So we should have some more answers in the next, you know, six months or so, what's happening. So, um, our SS48 grant have not heard a word from the government.
Really?
So that's still just sitting out there.
Should we ask?
You would certainly ask. I've been.
Work with Sam.
Sure.
I mean, I think they probably would've told us if they knew anything, but, I mean, I'm happy to.
If you, uh. Yeah, that would be fantastic. Um, I haven't gotten no response.
Oh, you tried.
Yeah, and I, I have only reached out to my contacts as far as that, if you have a different contact, um, that would be fantastic. Um, Lenwood Project has won a DJC Top Project of the Year and, um, we submitted that jointly with Clackamas County and that's, um, I think being celebrated in June.
Wait, what does that mean? DJC Top Project of the Year?
It's, um, the DJC is a newspaper.
Oh.
That a lot of, um, we advertise in for a lot of our projects and stuff. It's a local business, um, newspaper. And, um, it was submitted for an award and it, yeah.
Congratulations.
Top Project of the Year, so.
Oh.
Um, yeah. I mentioned that just in case we hear anything about it. You're like, what's going on here? Yep. Um, so we have lost two engineering tasks, but we have refilled those positions, which is exciting. Um, and they should be filled by the end of this month. So one other thing you're gonna see is a construction, um, on-call construction inspection consultant. I'm actually bringing on two. Um, this helps our staff immensely. It's budgeted to the project, um, so we only bill it out if we use it. And, um, we're looking at a severe contract for two contracts, for two consultants, um, $750,000 each. Um, potentially we'd be able to use this contract, maybe even force some of the water work if we need extra inspection work for that. So it is an on-call. It's not a guarantee of funds. Um, but we're making it long enough so we don't have to go back out for a while. That's part of that. So that's coming up, um, in probably June, I think 17th. Next, this is it. This is the final one. Okay, so now we're gonna start working on our new CIP. Here's the roadmap. Um, looks like, so we're here in May. Um, staff has gone to the budget committee, identified the CIP criteria. Um, in August, we'll be talking about affordability goal. Then November, policy direction to guide CIP, participation of the CIP list. February, draft proposal. And then May. And what else do you wanna say?
No, thank you so much, Jen, just to clarify. So we'll kick off the affordability goal, um, next month, here, or, you know, in just a couple of weeks. Um, but what we, one of the things you'll see when we bring that action plan forward is we really liken that August budget committee meeting to start talking about the cost-benefit analysis of different, um, scenarios, um, related to, uh, utility relief. You know, that's one of the ways you framed that goal. And so we really need to, you know, we're gonna be bringing to you the needs we have in those utility systems. Um, and what we're gonna have to cover in terms of rate increases and then be talking to you about, now, if you wanna be looking at doing rebates or if you wanna be looking at doing, at capping a fund balance, what all those different scenarios then might look like in terms of rates. Because we really need direction from you all in terms of, and from the budget committee, in terms of what affordability means to you through that rate design before we start then developing a CIP to bring you to the next budget process. It's kind of a domino effect. So that's why we really wanted to make sure those affordability principles were nailed down this summer and fall so that then, as we go into the CIP prioritization and we try to make the sausage-making work with rate design and project needs, we're coming out with something that matches the direction from you all.
Any other questions?
59. Oh, we're not gonna get her out of here by five.
On time, on budget. The engineering way.
Um, it's not really a discussion for today, but I, um, I guess thinking about budget and, you know, how we do this is, um, I've gotten a few complaints from people about, uh, that we aren't on top of, uh, striping, like restriping and repainting. What are we gonna be repainting? Renewing sharers, things like that. So I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about how you determine the cycle and the timing for that.
So I think, I think, so what happened is the county used to do all of our striping and they, um, lost a few folks and actually couldn't do our striping. Um, we tried to add it to a project two years ago and it, I, I couldn't. It was too last minute. So over the last two years, we have added striping to the SSMP Grind and Inlay project. So it'll get restripped again this year. So, um, we've now just kind of tagged it on to our Grind and Inlay project, so we're not waiting. I checked in with the.
So they're strapping elsewhere beyond the Grind and Inlay streets.
Yes. They're strapping at whatever the list, um, streets give me.
Okay.
So streets puts a list together and I started, we put everything on there and it's limits, um, that go from street to street. So, um, I would agree, we went, um, a year that we did not do striping and, um, it, it, it definitely hurt as far as that goes. But we did it last year and we're doing it again this year. I will probably plan for the next year as well. The county did say they're getting their program back in, up and running. They're still a little short-staffed and said they couldn't do it this year. They'll, we'll talk next year to see if they'll come back. Um, I will also plan on it just in case. Um, they are a little bit cheaper than it is, uh, but we got a, we got a good price, a decent, a decent price last year. Um, to have another company come out to do it. When I added it at the beginning of a project, so we got bid number four, you know, the bid value for it. Um, when you add it on as a change order, it, the number was just like 200% up and it was like, no, I can't, we can't afford this. So at the moment, I'm planning to do it every year with the Grind and Inlay and then, um, that does not include, that's only striping. That does not include though our, um, thermal plastic, which is done by our sign and markings department. So, um, I think they, they get another, um, seasonal and.
Oh.
Okay. So.
So the primary driver used in the county is price.
It is, yeah. And.
Is it significant?
Yeah.
Um, it, it, it was, but I.
I don't know now. They could, they could charge us more.
Yeah. I think Jen said, I mean, the price that we've got the last few years, they were reasonable.
Yeah, for the last year. And then I'll know what I'll get this year. We'll see if it's gone up or down or what. So, but yes, we have striping. Sorry, I didn't mention that, but yes, the striping is added to the Grind and Pave project, um, which is a good project to add it on, um, as far as that goes. Um, and then, uh, the Grind and Pave only if we, if there's a stop or our share that's impacted, that gets redone for that project as far as that goes.
And, and we don't have that, I know. That takes some, some expensive equipment.
Yeah. Anyway, we should see that updated, um, this next, for this, for this project if we have update.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah.
Other questions, anyone?
It's exciting to see everything moving.
A lot of good marks.
I just wanna know, I mean, yes, engineering, it's not technically in public works in our org's heart, but it is National Public Works Week. And all of the projects that Jen just talked about are examples of fantastic and critical public works infrastructure and the city would literally grind to a halt without all of it. So thank you to Jen's team and Peter's whole team for all they do to keep the city moving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Luck.
Don't say equally nice things about solid waste, don't.
Do we have Michael?
We do, we find you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, so next we have, uh, discussion of our solid waste rates with.
Be still this season.
Well, I will second that. When I started on city council 10 years ago and we held rates the same for three years.
Yeah.
We did not raise rates for three, maybe, maybe four years. So, yeah.
It's, it's an interesting town, though. I told a colleague, it's kind of the old, old regulation of garbage. Before you set out a curve, forget about it, right? Now, you've got three cards, and then you've got a fund of agencies that are regulated from the city to Metro to a, to a P R O, to D E Q. It's, it's become, become, like I said, very, very regulated these days.
So kind of taking a step back a little bit, I was gonna introduce Chris. He didn't know. We're continuing our pre-scheduled discussion that we had from two weeks ago. We're here to talk about solid waste rates. City contracts with Chris Bell from Bell and Associates. He does an analysis on the previous year's costs from the solid waste franchises and determines, does a proposal of what those rates are for the coming year. So with that, I'll hand it over to Chris.
And just one friendly reminder, so all of us have to be picked up by the mic and the ceiling here, so just project, Chris.
All right. Talk for your own right. Thanks for having me here. Again, this is a similar presentation I gave last year. Again, just a brief summary. You have three franchises. One of them has a very small area, and that's clackamas garbage. And I believe they're less than 20 customers. And typically, I don't include them in there because they don't make an impact. Often. But your two primary garbage haulers are waste management. And then your hauler for, shoot, even when Joe worked for him back in the day, 20-some years ago. And Kay Hoot, which was acquired a couple of years ago by Waste Connection. So those are your two primary haulers. Again, you have approximately 6,200 residential customers, 362 commercial customers. And in this area, you had about 3,600 drop box hauls over the previous year. It's a small community, but there's a lot going on with the area. And this map is, is a summary of, or present, you know, the franchise areas or the collection territories that each hauler collects. And you can see the biggest territory is collected by waste management. And then northern part of the city is collected by Kay Hoot. And down in the bottom right, there's an orange area, and that's clackamas garbage.
Just out of curiosity, what's the, what's the middle part?
Yeah, that's a.
Else side.
And I think that used to be Dynas before, and Kay Hoot on that. And that was one of their franchise areas. So clackamas have this little carve-out because they're connected to other areas? Correct. South, east.
Yeah, if you were looking at that, that map, you'd see it's just the tip.
So this year, and our cost associated with inspection, Waste Management operates under a contract, a union contract with Teamsters. And I utilize that contract for the estimation of additional cost for, for labor. And that increase right now is 3%. And then Metro controls the cost, or controls the, has the transfer stations and regulates the cost disposal. And again, Waste Management takes, utilizes Metro's transfer station, which is literally right down the end of the street. And then Kay Hoot utilizes the transfer station. It can't be their own transfer station. And both, both material, both, the waste actually, from Metro goes to Columbia Ridge landfill, which is owned by Waste Management. And I believe, do you guys still have the contract with Columbia Ridge or?
With Wosco.
Okay.
Contract expired.
Contract expired. So the portion that Kay Hoot collects goes down to Candy and that goes out to Wosco County landfill outside of Dallas. There also is an increase in the organic disposal fee of 6.9%. And let me explain, this year, this was the first in about five years where the cost of the disposal increase wasn't significant. It's high, you know, 5.5%. When you look at a dollar amount, at $165, or $163.27, that's very high for, for, and over the last five years, it's increased by almost 60%, over 60%. It's been increasing 13% annually over the last five years. That's a lot of money for disposal. The organic disposal fee at Metro increased by 6.9%. And there's, there's two types of, this right here is organic, organic waste, which is a combination of yard debris and food waste. There's also plain yard debris outside Milwaukee. Yard debris is what's picked up for on the residential routes and it doesn't have any food mixed in it. And there's a delta in that cost between, I believe it's $55 a ton for yard debris versus $96 a ton for yard debris mixed with food. There's also one significant increase this year. Over the last six years, I believe, there's been this compressed natural gas tax credit that Waste Management's been utilizing because they run their trucks on compressed natural gas. And that credit expired on December 31st. And that credit was a very significant, because it bought down the cost of fuel. The impact on this is an increase of 70% over the previous cost. So the way that, that tax credit operated is they were paid a credit on the volume of gas purchased versus the volume, or excuse me, the volume of gas used versus the volume of gas purchased. So it was very significant and it was very beneficial to the ratepayers. And this year, you're gonna see an increase of around $74,000 just for the cost of that expiring tax credit.
Can you, on the organic, that increase of 6.9% was for both the clean organics and the ones mixed with food? Or that's on?
That is food. That's, that's any kind of waste, whether it's yard debris, food waste, it makes all.
Okay. So that's what increased by 6.9%?
Correct. And then you can, you know, with the same truck, you can pick up the residential waste. You can pick up the commercial waste. Mix those two together, that's, that's the value of it. But when a significant portion of your, your tonnage is collected from residents, it does, it does significantly impact your resident customers as far as the rates. There is, there is about, approximately, I think, $1.80 to $2.00 difference between what the city of Milwaukee is paying versus a resident in clackamas county because of that additional food that's being introduced into the yard debris.
Okay. Well, I did wanna get into that with your report. I don't know if now's the time or you wanna go on.
We, we, Mike was getting, give me a heads up. He says this is gonna be a question. And this is, this is a question that's being asked quite frequently. And that is, you know, what is the, what is the benefit, right, of having food waste in the yard? And, you know, it varies anywhere from 2% to 5% of that. That collected material could be food waste. But anytime you introduce food into that yard debris, it's a different regulatory requirement to process that material. That's why there's such that, such a difference between composting yard debris, composting yard debris mixed with food.
Okay, so you gave us the tonnage price, which was not quite twice, I think.
Yeah.
I think you said 50-something for yard debris and 90-something for.
Yes, 96.55.
Okay, so not quite. So let's just say twice the price. It's not really. But then in your proposed residential collection rates, you show organics as 35 cents of the, of the.
Increase.
The increase. But you tell us elsewhere that it's $1.20 or $1.80.
That's already embedded in the rates.
So why is it more than twice 35 cents?
It's already embedded in the rates. So you, you, you're paying an incremental amount, 6.9% for the incremental amount that's already embedded in the rates.
I'm not sure I understand that, but.
I can, I can show you the math.
I mean, I, I mean, you're saying it's 35 cents.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I just, it doesn't seem to me like it's all consistent.
Yeah, and part of that, part of that difference is what was collected. We set the rate, we get the rate for 2024. And there's, there's a tonnage amount that was collected within the city of Milwaukee. And then we look at what was collected last year. We take the current rate and then we estimate, we, we take the current rate and the new rate and we calculate what that additional cost is gonna be. And we divide it by the number of households who have their debris serviced. So if last year you had a lot of customers, you know, let's say it was a wetter year than normal, and let's say the increase or the, the amount of tons picked up, let's say, let's say equal that to 100 pounds more per customer per year. That does have an impact on that 35 cents. If it was lower, then, then we look at that tonnage amount and we calculate based on the previous year.
Chris, can, super technical, but can you just zoom out here somehow? Or maybe Emma's half Nicole enough.
Sit there and look at that.
Okay.
We're switching to PowerPoint to make it more visible, sorry.
And maybe you'll get to this. But a question that I have is this percentage of reading the U of B year, how they all get combined into the proposed rates?
Oh.
The mayor was just talking about.
Click on slide four.
But yes.
Yep.
Okay, just one side, don't always share this too soon.
Can I still control this with the clicker?
Yeah. You should be able to, like.
Yeah, I just wanted to see that, right amount that was kind of. Okay, thank you.
It's the biggest impact. Significant expense at all. It goes to smoke, labor, and it goes to cost of collection, truck and collection operation, then administration and customer service. But like I said, this is the, you know, the last, since 2020, we've seen significant increases over every year for the cost disposal. It's come out to 13% annually or just under 65% for the last five years. This is the first year that was under 6% an increase. And if you recall, the last previous year has been 70. I was happy to see that because officially, we were told it was gonna be around 98, 9.98, if you drop it down to 5.8%. What's happening is there's an organization or a group of city council members and mayors that are now looking in and working with Metro to try to determine what the best rate is, what, asking questions, being critical of the rates that have been, been set in the past. So through that process, the rates were initially presented to the, to the cities at 9.98%. And they got a reach to 5.58%, which is what we're, what I'm showing you here today. So that's asking questions and, and being critical of what was being presented as been beneficial to the ratepayer. And so you can see that at $163.27, the cost of disposal for your ratepayer in the city of Milwaukee for the person with 35 gallon cart is just under $10. So that person, that individual is paying $10 just for the disposal. I agree with that. And if you are a four-yard customer, customer with a four-yard container picked up once a, once a week, you know, you're looking at about $180 for disposal. Just, that's just for the disposal component. That's not for the collection and recycling or anything else. That's just for a collection, disposal.
Before we go on, can you, tell me, tell me more about this group of people who's working with Metro? I don't think we're a part of that.
It was, it's the AWAC. I know that the mayor of the city of Beaverton, she's on it. She was, she was pretty adamant about wanting to be on that. And it's a couple of council members and it's some people from, from the industry.
New bodies?
Yes. Yeah, this is in, this is in response to where these, these increases every year. You know, collective bodies have the points that we, we need to be a part of. We're having a hard time explaining why. So it's a group of I live in operations. And it's just a start. And I'm happy to see that they're doing that. But there's food for this group. Metro did add the, I think they did it begrudgingly. Because they used to have something, they used to, this used to be kind of the, the process where I had a colleague that I've worked with for quite some time. And he said, when he was at Metro, they would knock on the doors of all the jurisdictions and then present the budget and sit with each of the individual council members and say, this is what we're gonna do and get your input. And at that time, they're having an increase of maybe 1%, 2%. They'd have an increase, they'd explain what the increase was for. It was a very open dialogue. And that went away about 10 years ago. And over the last five years, like I said, it's, it went from, you know, just under $100 to 100 and almost $165 a ton.
Well, I, I want to raise a hand, you know. And so I, you know, the reason I asked the question, I didn't know about this group because, you know, one of the things I was gonna bring up is, do we invite Metro in? Do we invite Christine in? Do we join this group? Because this is out of control.
Yeah. Yeah. It is. It is, unfortunately. So I just kinda throw that out. I'd like to hear if anyone else has the same feelings.
Well, I mean, we did invite them in. It was more a conversation around their regional plan than around specifically current rates. But I mean, I feel like we did talk about that at the meeting. But I mean, we can invite them in again. I mean, I, I suspect that this group was formed because they heard from lots of cities. I know they, at the time they came to us, they had gone, you know, they had gone around to a bunch of cities, so.
I will share that Christine is the committee vice chair of the Regional Waste Committee.
Well, I don't know how we wanna interject our voice here. But maybe the letter to the group, maybe, I don't know, bringing people in. I just throw it out is that I want us to add Milwaukee's voice to the displeasure about this.
I know after, like you had presented these increases in a meeting before.
Yes.
I talked to Christine Lewis in one of our check-ins about this. I can go back and check my notes. I think she explained they were recouping some, like insufficient increases in years past. But I don't think that.
So this was a catch-up?
I, I need to, I'm gonna go back and.
It's a catch-up with a C1K, so.
If I, if I may, Mary.
Yep, there we go. Sorry, I was just gonna say Adam has his hand raised.
I think that what I would say is like this process hopefully will be able.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. And I'm sorry I'm unable to attend in person. I, I did just wanna agree with, with Councilor Massey on that. If we do invite them, maybe we invite them in a sense as to kinda explain if they have any plans to mitigate these increases, especially with the uncertainty at the national level, at the state level with budgets and the economy overall. Do they, is there any plan of action to help mitigate costs when things start going or potentially getting worse for consumers? I'd like to hear what their plan is for, for that, if, if there is one. Or maybe at least we can help them, nudge them in that direction if there isn't one. But yeah, I, I wouldn't mind, because I remember they did come and they did explain to us some of these things. But that was more about their, the overall, a, a bigger project that they were talking about. But, you know, there's gotta be something. I mean, everybody's in a, in a tight crunch right now. So I, I would hope that the Metro Council would have some sort of plan to ease the cost on consumers or, or these, or the haulers themselves. I don't know. But maybe that's how we frame it in the invite is, we'd like to hear what their plan is. Because, I mean, it's, it's getting out of control.
So Emma just uncovered the fact that they meet on Thursday this week. So the Regional Waste Inviter Committee.
This is the group?
Mm-hmm. Who's talking about. So, and I assume like all Metro meetings, there's a Zoom option. So it might be an opportunity for some counselors to express concerns. And we probably can't have a. And we probably can't have a, a joint letter as a council, but I think you can probably express, I mean, we'll look for head nods that you can express the concern of all of council on that. If you're able to attend. And what time is that meeting?
It is 2:00 PM in the afternoon on Thursday, the 22nd.
Do we want to deputize one or more counselors to go? I mean, you don't need us to give you permission to go there and speak, of course. But do we want to deputize you to speak on behalf of a whole council? Do we want to invite them here? I think it'd be good to have somebody attend that meeting and that might inform whether it makes sense to invite them here or not.
I would certainly like to, but I'm sitting down in my dentist's chair exactly there. Checking my.
I might, I have a noon event that day. I might be able to be back by two, but I think I'm not as passionate about this as some of you may be. Counselor Coster-Boddy is.
I would, yes, fair. I would, I was just going to say I would totally join that meeting. However, that's, I fly back this Thursday at 1:00. So I, I'd be in the air during that, that meeting. But I have no problem reaching out as soon as I land to invite them or to follow up on a meeting whenever I can do, if that helps.
Okay. Well, let's let Chris go on with his presentation and then we can circle back to what we want to do these amazing terms.
So when I put together the rates, I'm looking at all the costs, the increased costs versus, there's the base rate. And what you see here are the additional costs associated with, in this case, the disposal fee, the cost of the increased cost of the organics, the cost of the labor, the collection labor, the fuel, which is the reduction of the natural gas tax credit. And so if you take those four, I think four costs, put them together, and that is the culmination of the proposed or the requested increase for collection rates for residential.
Was it safe to say for like the food waste? Was it $1.45 last year and then it's increasing to 35 cents?
No, it's actually the 40 cents. No, no, it's, it's the delta, it's a dollar eighty delta between. So if we're looking at, so if I recall, it's 900 pounds divided by 2,000, times 96. Divide that by 0.85. Divide that by, well.
So what are you calculating?
I'm calculating what the cost is, the monthly cost for your, your organic disposal. So 900 pounds is the average. Set out per year for a residential customer.
Oh, yard.
So you take that 900 pounds and divide it by 2,000. You multiply by $96, which is the fee, the rate for. And then you're going to divide that by 0.85. And the reason you're dividing it by 0.85 is there's the franchise fee of 5%. So as I say, then there's the, the margin, the 10% mark. And so that's your impact. And then you divide it by 12 months because it's over the course of. So the cost of the program is $4.24 a month, a month, a month, just for the, for the, for the yard debris disposal.
Or that's even higher than we heard in here.
But the difference is the dollar eighty. So if you were to get just regular yard debris, let's say it was $54.
Okay, got it. It causes.
Yeah.
It should be basically not more, it should be about twice.
Yeah, it's, 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 exactly.
Well, we talked about this in our previous meetings. And, you know, and I think that, you know, the thought was that, you know, it's a, it's, it's, to me, it's a significant amount of money when you look at the whole city. But it was going to be a huge, you know, re-education effort and we're buying it. People are kind of used to alley handling garbage, you know? And so I'm not sure if people like it or not. I mean, some, some folks, you know, it's, it's worth the savings, for some it's not.
Yeah, if you think of a dollar eighty difference, you know, times 12, so, not quite $24, $22 or something a year. It's a difference.
$1.16.
There you go.
So the proposed container, the collection for, for commercial containers is very similar, doing the difference is we don't have the, the organic waste there. But it's the increase for the, the Metro disposal fee. It's the cost of the labor. It's the fuel increase from the, from the sun setting and the natural gas tax credits. So you add those up and they come out to a dollar sixteen per collected yard of garbage. So the increase would be if you got a three yards collected once a week, you take three times the dollar sixteen, and then you multiply that by 4.33, which is the number of collection, your collection pickups per month. And that 4.33 is just taking 52 divided by 12.
So restaurants have to do the food waste, right?
Yes.
So is that getting calculated in when you're calculating ours? Or is that a separate thing?
It's, it's, the, the cost of that program is covered. When we, we set the rates a couple of years ago, we estimated what that additional collection cost was going to be. Add it to the rates, it's sort of absorbed in there. And so the, the restaurants, if you're, you know, they've always, the way the system's set up, they've gotten the benefit of getting the, the lower rates because if you were actually assess a restaurant based on the amount of weight they set on, they'd be paying a lot more because that, that weight of that container with all that food waste is about 260, 270 pounds cubic yard on average versus maybe 90 to 100 pounds for most everybody else. But they pay the same rate as everybody else. So they give that, that, that built-in substantiation for the way that we had set up. And then when we looked at that, that rollout of the commercial collection program, we increased the, the cost associated. We estimated how much more that would be and we added that to the rates. And said, okay, you're collecting, you know, 100,000 yards, it's a dollar a yard. We added that to the rates back in the day. And so if there's an increase in cost above the target or underneath the, the margin, then we go ahead and recount. It's just right here, it's just primarily pass-through costs that we know are going to be incurred by the haulers. And that's going to be these three, these three pieces.
And the, I'm not personally an advocate for changing and not taking food waste, but if we were to do that, if we were to try and go back to yard debris only.
Yeah.
Would that mean the haulers had to bring out two different trucks? Because they're, they can't pick up the restaurants and the residents, like here in downtown Milwaukee, where you've got residential right up against businesses and, and food, you know, food services.
Yeah, I'm assuming that, I don't, I don't know the, the container matrix for commercial, but most haulers will utilize a cart for the food waste. I mean, someone with a bigger, bigger food waste generator will utilize a front-end container. But most are running the, the carts because they can pick it up with the rest, with, with, with the residential collection route. And that's been, that's been utilized here.
So that's saying yes?
Yes.
If they had to pick up yard debris from the residents and food waste from the, that's two different trucks coming out.
That's two different trucks. If you, if you, if, yes, to answer your question, the I project.
Yeah.
And then the proposed Dropbox rollout compactors is similar. You have the increase in labor and the increased cost of food. Disposal on Dropbox, you have compactors and pass-throughs, whatever the actual dollar amount is, the customer's invoice for that, that amount. So that's a pass-through. So it's not embedded in, in the, in the haul rates for Dropbox. But that will, the customer will pay that additional amount. And your biggest customer here within the city is the city cast parts. They send most of their waste out to Hillsboro landfill. If you aggregate that cost, it's around $150,000 for, where you just multiply that 24 times the number of, you know, counts. That's half, that's half 50 grand total. So long. Well, that's the end of the presentation.
All right, so let's focus on the rates for now and then we'll come back to the Metro. So our rates need to go into our B schedule for next one. Thoughts, questions?
I'm still a little caught up on this organic question. I'm trying to pull up my utility bill right now for context. You're saying that it costs about $4 a month to run this organic waste program?
Just for the disposal. That's just for the, that's not kind of the collection.
Okay, so it could cost more than that.
It's going to cost.
If we were to remove that program, it could save residents $4 a month?
It would save about $1.
That's 21.
The, the delta is a dollar.
Correct.
And also just break the waste, the waste that's, yeah. Like a bill as well.
So our additional programming that we do for our waste removal adds about $3.
About $3 compared to Clackamas.
I think about this and like, we're considering raising utility rates or our utility bill, $7 a month. How big of a revenue generator that is? How do we like cushion those increases or like, I don't know. I think it is a worthwhile question to explore if we want to continue a program like this. And if we do choose to continue it, I think we should think about it on par with decisions like increasing occupancy or increasing our safety or doing any of the other increases that we're doing. And we can still decide to continue it, but I think it is something that like, we should weigh.
Well, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
That's what we're here for. So what do you, I mean, yeah. I mean, we need to make this decision in the next couple of weeks because it needs to go in the B schedule, so.
June 3rd is when it comes before council for adoption. I mean, June 3rd is when the B schedules come in for adoption.
I mean, I see it a little different. I mean, it is, it is definitely more cost, both of the things are definitely more costly than they were when council first undertook them both. We were told the bulky waste would be about 50 cents a month and the, and the food debris would be less. So they have, ended up being considerably more expensive than we discussed at the time we adopted them. On the other hand, they're both things that I think a lot of residents rely on.
The bulky waste, I'll say this, this is, it's, I'm assuming it's a popular program for about $14, $15 a year. You can be creative and, you know, everyone has a drive sale for a good weekend, right? Give away everything.
I think it's still cheaper than going and taking it to Metro.
Yes, I think Metro's house, like, gardening fee is 20 something, yeah. Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Adam has his hand raised. Okay, thank you. Adam, Counselor Coster-Boddy?
Yes, thank, thank you, Nicole, I appreciate you. Yeah, I just wanted to, a quick question, actually. So if we were to cut that program, the organic waste, that would be overall, that would be a $4 decrease a month, right? Total, like the whole $4?
No, $1.80.
Would or no?
$1.80 a month, $21.60 a year.
But that's permitted on their side, right? Didn't you say that $3, the other $3 is what we're administering? Did I, did I hear that?
If you're talking about the food waste, it's a $1.80 a month reduction. Talking about the food waste and the bulky waste, it's a $3 a month reduction.
With the bulky waste, you have to give rid of that program too?
Right.
Okay.
Question I have is, say they decide to stop the food waste, is that something that's a need for the haulers? It's just to turn that off where it's their, their, their process?
Maybe no transition, like it's harder to shut people off.
Yeah.
So what would happen is they would take up the food and, you know, you have contaminated loads of yard debris, you get charged fees for bringing contaminated loads of yard debris into the process. So it would take more than a month to get people to stop using that service.
I mean, and how do you? I mean, you can send out mailers and we can put it in the pilot and stuff like that. But, you know, a lot of people are still going to do it probably. And so how do you get to compliance unless you've got somebody who's going out and looking at it for you once? Man.
I was going to say, the last mayor did that.
Did he?
Do we know?
I've heard of communities that have recycling, I don't think.
I got to commend, I got to commend it because he had questions and he went out there and he spent a morning looking at carts and, and he was, he was actually rather impressed the amount of. And he, Mayor Amber expected to see a lot of recycling in the, in the garbage. And he, what he found is just that he found a lot of recycling and recycling, a lot of garbage in the garbage. And so he was actually surprised, pleasantly surprised. Yeah, so it never became an issue after that. You know, because people were using it for its intended purpose.
And is there a way to measure utilization of the organic program? Or even in?
I, I have a colleague who did it. He actually did waste sorting. And I asked, he did a sort a couple of years ago up here in the city of Olympia to measure how much food is actually in, in the program. And he said it was really, really difficult because as soon as you put the food in with that yard debris, it starts to deteriorate quickly. And he said it was really hard to differentiate between yard debris and food waste. And he's talking food waste, I mean, if you put vegetables or something like that, nobody cares. Because it's, it's all like, what, what the, the big thing is, is meat. Nobody knows. And so that's why they've got this additional steps. But, but Rick O'Meade, I think it was between 3 and 5%. He said that's, that's kind of being generous because he had a difficult time trying to weigh material that's already starting to decompose or it's covered in grass. And, and I, you know, I've heard the utilization on this is, is, it's, it's small. And, and the cost is high. That's why Clackamas County, the, the person over there, Rick, is not running to get the simple because he's looking at that delta and the costs. And so when we look at, you know, Joe and, and, and Mike Jefferson, he can tell you how much I beat him up on, how much bleed over of food waste are you trying to allocate to Clackamas County? Because there are some carryover between the routes, between what they pick up in Portland, in Milwaukee and, and Clackamas. And Clackamas does pay for a portion of that food waste just because of the inefficiency or, or the efficiency of the routes to stop. But overall, it's not a significant amount. And I don't think anybody can tell you exactly how much was diverted of food waste in the residential waste stream anywhere in this, this Portland metropolitan area. I would, I would be back thinking to you that with precision.
But so were you saying if, if what you put in is fruit and vegetable waste and not meat or say cheese or eggs?
Yeah.
It can all just go as yard debris?
Yeah. Think about it, if you clear out your garden, right?
So we're paying compost, meat and eggs, basically.
Counselor Coster-Boddy's hand is raised again. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, yeah, I, that, that, that changes things, for, for me at least. I was actually going to ask if there was a way, I mean, I'm sure there isn't, but to see how much, how, how much of Milwaukee knows about this program or participates in, in that. But I don't think there's really a way to determine that. But yeah, the fact that. The fact that you can still throw that in there, I mean, then what are we, what are we really paying for? And considering the increases that we're facing right now, I mean, I, I mean, you know, that, that point that was just made, that does change, change things for me.
I would say, when I talk to residents, I hear like, the, the most common thing I hear our residents want is side wants on their neighborhood. And I know we're considering like a dollar and 10 cent increase in our safety fee. So why is there fun to be able to afford this? I do not hear our residents ask much about recycling or composting egg for me for an even more expensive increase. We're like, I do take the point that if it is this narrow in scope, what we're able to compost for this much money compared to other ass of our residents, it's a, I, I see an imbalance. We feel comfortable paying in excess. We could go down that way, but I think there are other costs that, you know, right now.
My thoughts on this thing is that, you know, kind of going full circle on this is that, you know, frankly, I'm, I'm satisfied with the, the status quo. And that's primarily not so much a dollars and cents issue, it's the education. And, you know, the additional segregation that each family is gonna have to go through if we go through, you know, these other things and, you know, we're, you know, and I think that's just gonna be a hassle. It's, uh, I think when you look at the individual, you know, household cost, it's not that much. If you're aggregated, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you look at, you know, uh, this being $24 a year, the conveniences, I think most people are satisfied with it. Now, the thing that I still have heartburn with is the Metro increases. I mean, that's, that's a separate issue.
Um, okay, so on the councillor's, we haven't really heard from you on this topic.
Well, I'm kind of torn, um, because we do use the service at our house. And I'm not really, I think, I feel like, I feel like it would be helpful in light of some of the other increases that, that folks are going to experience, that it would be kind of nice to neutralize, you know, with those $100, around $1.80. But I also think that the people who use the service are the ones who, are the ones who love it the most, you know? They're, they really appreciate having that option here in the city, you know? So, yeah, I guess.
I just wanna also call out, you know, I think we're focusing a lot on the food waste piece and not a lot on the bulky waste piece. Another beloved part of our programs. But I just also think it's important to think of these both in the context of the Climate Action Plan. And, um, making a choice of which one of the, if you're going to choose one of those services, there's bigger policy conflicts in my eyes, so nothing the other. Remember, services that, you know, I think have deep appreciation among your constituent bases, but I just didn't want to lose the nuance there and some of your other policy priorities in this conversation.
So are you saying, I know that the, that the impacts on cutting the composting program would be greater than cutting the bulky waste?
I, I welcome Peter's thoughts on this. I guess I would say, I think one of the reasons you, you support food composting and your yard waste is to promote less food waste going into landfills for environmental benefit. I also think that bulky waste day, while very popular, um, and has other social benefits, leads to a lot of disposal of equipment rather than reuse of equipment.
I, I would, I would take it over to Metro somewhere, that's exactly.
Well, I, I would, I would, I would not, I don't feel comfortable not challenging that to a certain extent. And the reason is every time I put out things for bulky waste, someone grabs it and reuses it. And I gotta tell you, it's, that is, to me, that is a perfect marketplace.
Sure, totally.
And some of their, Luke Winwin this year is doing a yard sale the week before bulky waste. So they're doing community yard sales, so sell what you can and have less to put out for bulky waste.
I think it'd be a win-win for us and the haulers if we could really promote that. So that's less stuff to actually be picking up and more reuse. But I, I just more wanted to, you know, I think we're, it's really important to look at this as a dollars and cents conversation. There are also, there are other reasons beyond the cost that I think promoted the inclusion or might want to be considered when you think about whether to stop either of the programs that add an additional premium on the rate.
When I think about the alternatives, you know, with like home composting, meat and eggs are the hardest, you know, to, you can't compost those at home, I think, you know? I, I mean, the piece that keeps coming back to my mind around this, and it's really, I mean, I know that we're focused on a decision around a particular program versus another program, or at least that's the way that the conversation has led, but, I'm, I really feel like we do need a more robust reuse, um, strategy in Milwaukee. You know, and if we had that, then maybe it would be a little less painful, you know, to eliminate something like the bulky use day because you would actually have a place to take your things. And I don't know, I mean, we had talked with Metro about some potential around that strategy, but I don't know if we've made any headway. And again, it's like, it's a tangent from this particular conversation, but that's just something that keeps-
Well, that was their big plan, right?
Right.
Is to have these depots. So I think that's still part of their plan, but it's not, it's a few years, I mean, it's several years.
But I'm thinking about like the advocacy that we can do to keep reiterating Milwaukee needs one of those depots. Otherwise, I think that they're going to place them in other areas of the metro.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's another advisory group, we could probably have somebody on if somebody else is gonna be on that advisory group. So I will say on the bulky waste, I have heard from former councillor Ambler, who works for the Metro solid waste program, that there's talk of actually making cities to go on waste type day. They hold out Milwaukee as an example because they think that's a more useful thing than people doing individual loads down to Metro South. So, whatever it's worth, uh, I have heard him say that.
It is, it's a good bet.
Pardon?
That there will be pressure from Metro to start that kind of program.
Yeah.
Milwaukee down the line, Trump down the line. We're gonna save, we're gonna pay that. Well, we just, we just blew the lid, but that's, uh, that's kind of a, they bring in uh, Starbucks's. Uh, and then Porsche Road. Yeah, true. We have bulky events in Sandy, Candy and West London. Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Well, then possibly, I just throw this out as, as, as maybe a way to, to advocate or, you know, for reusing things. We all have a lot of things and stuff. It's that, um, you know, you look at the library of things. That's a component of it because everyone doesn't have to have a cordless drill. And so you, you know, that's not just, you get a, you have a cordless drill for a week, it's like, hey, you can keep another, uh, set of lithium batteries out of the, out of the, you know, the chain. Uh, and that's kind of a different argument about the, you know, the library of things. And, and I had to keep meaning to check this out. I understand that there's a website that says buy nothing. And, um, you know, a lot of people have stuff and, uh, maybe just, you know, that's one of the other things. Raise the visibility on those kinds of, uh, sort of organic opportunities to buy less stuff. And, and throw away less stuff.
And, and one of our, you know, one of our initiatives to that sort of prepared reuse of, of items and material. And, you know, frankly, we haven't spent much effort focusing on that as, as the Holland of, of the work that we're down on. You know, I, I think there's more opportunities there for, for further education around region, with the community on it.
All right, so we're coming up on time. What do we, uh, I mean, I think we can have a further conversation about, you know, outreach to Metro on all of those things. On, on their tipping fees, on their, on their placement of those kind of facilities and their new plan, et cetera. Those we don't have to decide today. Maybe a couple of councillors would like to be a team to work on letters or work on messaging on that. But, uh, we do need to decide rates today, so. I'm personally for keeping the status quo. I mean, I would, I would, yeah. I mean, I, I'm intrigued by the idea of dropping the bulky waste, but I, I'm also trying not to read, I mean, dump, not dropping the bulky waste, dropping the food, um, debris, but I am also cognizant that I don't eat meat, so I don't put, so most of what I'm putting in mine, I can still put in mine. I think for, you know, that's not the case for most families, so. And I do take, I mean, councillor Sam George is absolutely right, that's not something you can compost in your own backyard. So. Yeah.
I am on the status quo wagon as well.
I would say, when I think about, I think one, addressing the Metro increases is really important. That's a real cost driver. I see these two programs, uh, and I kind of think of bulky waste, councillor Massey, like you, it's a good, I mean, I have multiple decorations in my house that are from bulky waste, we, I just pull stuff from the street. And I think it encourages a culture of little thrifty Milwaukee. The, like, I really struggle, this is my like Republican moment, as we are thinking about like tightening the belt to the city, a program that I question what percent of our residents are using a program like this. And even to the point that is like a climate impact, I question our citywide carbon footprint, what percent of that is caused by trashing eggs and meat as opposed to composting eggs and meat? And the relative difference that you're gonna get for spending $1.80 a month? To me, it doesn't add. And I worry, I, I worry that we're gonna accept this cost on our residents, but then for one of the most popular programs that we have with our safe program, not with a sector that is 30% of our carbon emissions as a city and transportation, not invest the money that's needed there to continue to do that important work. So I think that like, if this is, if we're gonna go into our conversation about safe and say we need to tighten the belt, safe aspect by the wayside, but we still wanna compost eggs and meat as a city, to me, that feels like, to me, that feels like we're kind of missing the mark in our work on climate. If this isn't everything under the sun, like, I think, to councillor Massey's point, I can stomach an extra 12 bucks a year to compost meat and eggs in my compost. And I think I'm fine with that. I don't know if every resident in our city is, but I know I personally am fine with that. And I guess this is where I'm kind of weighing, this is where I'm struggling. The majority of council wants to keep this, you know, I'm trying to keep it too. If we're looking for a spot to tighten the belt, I think that this is one that, to me, seems more logical. Or at the very least, I would be really curious, our utilization as a city, um, if this is something that we cut in a future year.
Well, that might be an interesting question to add to our surveys that we do.
But I, I understand where you're coming from. Yeah, that, that's a very complicated question. It's very complicated. And, uh, if we go that route to gain some, you know, some resident insight, boy, we're gonna have to think about how we ask these questions, because to me, that's really a complicated question, you know, about, you know, a trade-off of, of, of money going here. You know, that you're sort of getting the benefit out of at your curve versus a benefit that you get all, you know, on a, on a, uh, a safe project that's eight blocks from your house. That's why I say it's complicated. Not that it's not good, it's complicated.
Chris and Holler, just sorry, I know we're going kind of around to get the votes, but I, I, I do want to ask to the education piece, if we were to cut the organic or the food waste and there is a holdover of people who are not, the behavior change lacks, what does that do for that waste? Because then you have wet waste going into your dry yard waste.
Well, that uses a dry yard waste, usually wet.
It's usually wet, okay. So it's still, it'd still be recycled or processed in the same way?
Correct. You know, the question is, you gotta see the food. You know, usually they'll, they'll spot contamination and it's, and it's not food necessarily, it's plastic bag, wood, stuff like that, that, you know, when it said, don't throw dirt or dirt or rocks in here. You know, that's the, or, or garbage, people will simply throw that in.
Contamination fees are real though. When we think, so Breachham is a city right next to Portland, so you are. Portland has this organic waste. Breachham is dry.
Yep.
And sometimes routes cross over, which Chris was talking about earlier. We get hit regularly with those, those things, so some of those will be there.
So you're saying you get a fine or you get a surcharge?
$50 a bit on-
How much?
The $50 on a load is six tons, five tons? So that's quite a bit for a ton when we get, we get fined.
And then does that loop back into the expenses next year when the rates are calculated?
Yes, maybe the dollars.
I'll say one more, can I say one more thing on that? You take the food out of the yard and where you put it into the trash. We're exposing that at $90 down at the bottom of the yard, we put it in the trash, we're exposing it at $160 a ton. So that delta's gonna shrink a little bit, that value is gonna shrink some. It's not a full dollar fee that you're gonna save. Next year, we'll come back and say, well, it's folded one up, so our fines one up, so we're gonna need to cover that cost. So may, maybe we promote more.
All right, um, so we need to hear from who is not for the status quo?
And are we discussing or are we voting in this work session?
We are discussing, we are making a citizen's work session, but we were bringing the rates for adoption at the next regular session. So that's why knowing the direction from today will inform what we put into the B schedule for adoption.
If I may, um, I, I, I'm, I'm in line more with the council president on this one. You know, if the majority of councils in favor of keeping it, uh, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, stop it or anything or, but, but I, I do think it's, at a time like this, considering that we were able to not have to do anything dramatic in terms of cuts, uh, and the fact that we are having some increases, not all of it just on us, some of them are out of our control. I felt like this was, this might be a good middle ground for, for residents. Uh, I know there, uh, the bulk waste is, is a, is popular, but I think considering what we could have cut or considering what may, might have to have been cut, you know, I think this was a pretty, pretty good, the one that had the least amount of, how can I say, I don't wanna say least amount of impact because there is a climate impact to it, but I, I think it's the, the lesser of the blows that we could have faced if we were to cut other, other things, other services or, or even staff, right? So I do think maybe in the future it is something that we consider. But yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna stand in the way if the majority of council wants to keep it. But I do think it's, it's, it's a discussion, uh, considering it's almost half of the, the fee of what your public safety fee would be.
So we're talking about both of them? Both the food and the bulky waste?
Correct.
Correct, okay. I wasn't sure that's where council president was, so, um, I'll let him speak for himself. I will just note that cutting the 180, if I'm reading Chris's report right, HWS 26, cutting the 180, cutting out the food waste, even if it's not quite 180, or if it comes back, I mean, next year, I guess, if we come back, means we hold rates the same. We don't raise the rates for the smaller containers. We raise the rate a little bit for the larger containers. And if we keep the- And if we keep the bulky waste, but we change the food waste, um, we could hold rates pretty steady for the, you know? So I guess that's, that's how I would frame the question. I mean, that's how I would think about it, but. Council President, you want to go?
I really appreciate what you said about, this is a much cheaper way to get rid of food waste as opposed to the other service. I think this is where, maybe it's a foolish solution, but a path forward. Can we amend something on the dais when we're voting on it, or?
I think procedurally, yes. You mean, so the, the fee schedule, is that what you're talking about?
I would, candidly, to me, what this hinges on then is, is this a program that, while it is more efficient to dispose of our food waste in this way, if this is a program that is not being utilized, to me, it does not make sense to pay a dollar eighty for a program that is underutilized or just not largely utilized. So I would be really curious, an imprecise measure, but setting up Engage Milwaukee that says, do you compost meat and eggs? And seeing like, that we say some benchmark, if it's under 20%, I would be more inclined to say we ax the program. If it's older, I would be inclined to say we keep it and we really educate people to push them in that way. I think it's like an imprecise way to get at this, but as opposed to making a decision today with no information, even that glimmer of information?
Well, I'd rather do it, put it in a real survey later in the year. Are we doing a survey late, end of this year? Engage Milwaukee is the same 200 people, it's all, I mean, it's a self-select group, I don't think it's very.
Compost their meat and eggs.
It's more likely if we do engage that they would. I'm willing to, like.
I mean, I think it's a good question. I think we should, we should try it. I mean, I think we should maybe survey on both, on the composting and the bulky waste popularity and see. And, and it's a way to educate people while we're doing it about what it costs.
The rate impact.
Yeah, exactly. But I don't see doing it quick and dirty between now and June 3rd.
Well, it comes down to you, Stavager.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, you know, we aren't voting today. We can't vote today. We can give Michael the direction to go with these rates, and people can come back and say, I guess, and to maybe be prepared with a rate chart minus the two things, minus. I don't think that's so complicated.
And that can be amended, right, once we get the results of?
That actually is a good question. I don't think we can amend solid waste rates mid-year. I think most things in the fee schedule we can, but look at.
We, we did it last year because we were late in the process. So I think we did the rates as of September 1st, but it makes it harder on everybody to do this. The easiest way is to do it once a year. Because the rates do increase on July 1st at Metro.
Well, okay, so, I, I understand the arguments to try and eliminate, you know, additional fees everywhere we can, or mitigate the new fees in every way. But also think that there are a lot of steps along the pipeline of like table to landfill, where either it's contaminated or there's confusion about this, or the, you know, never cross the streams. All of, all of these things, I feel little away at the dollar eighty estimate. And there's a piece of it that is just sticking with me around, um, the, the, the culture of values that we have in our community around climate action. We've taken really strong stances on that, and even if it's a, a small amount and a small percentage, it, I think that the, that the feel in our community is that we're doing every little bit that we can. So then you have, you know, other cities that are around us that have separated out, you know, these items. It would become confusing for people, which would then lead to more contaminants in the system, which leads to more increases. So anyway, I guess, um, um, I, I think I'm with the status.
And I might say, I think if we were to remove organics, do a survey in September that shows it's widely used programs, and then re-adopt organics, like, that seems like a two in and out solution. And so maybe what we do say is, let's put this in the survey in September. Have an honest look where we say, if this is an underutilized program, we can return to this in a year in the future. I think my, like, my, like, still hesitation or nervous feeling is, I think there, there is like a total amount that our residents are willing to pay, that we're willing to ask our residents to pay. And a seven dollar increase on your utility bill, a dollar increase for SAFE, a dollar eighty increase for meat and eggs, like, all of these things add up, and.
We already have, I mean, this is already.
I, I'm saying that in the universe of things we're asking to pay, this is a component of that. And I worry that when we have future conversations about other allegations, we're going to say, we can't spend the money here. And I think that, if, I'm fine to go along with this today, but I want to make sure that these dollars, they're in competition with other dollars, if we see ourselves in a really scarce environment, that we're spending the dollars in a strategic way. I think if we're going for a yes and approach to climate, I'm all fine with that, but doing that intentionally.
Well, I think, I mean, the yes ands, that we try and find, um, larger levers that are then accessible to our residents, you know, like opening up some type of reuse center, where, I mean, because what I hear from folks is like, bulky waste day needs to be every day, right? You know, and, so, if we were to spend some time and energy advocating for something that's going to be a really large impact, um, and, and I think that the inclusion of food waste with compost is, um, it's a social, cultural change that is difficult to, um, to mess with with policy, right? Like, ultimately, we want people to either not put it in at all, or, you know, or to be able to understand the impacts of those items.
And maybe I'll just say it more explicitly, like, if we decide to spend a dollar eighty on this program, but say no to a SAFE increase, something that I hear about, and you're constantly, especially with new middle housing coming in, to build sidewalks, and one of the most popular programs in the city, I will feel pretty upset and pretty like, we went in a direction that I don't think is strategic. I think it's fine to do both, but I, I can't help but see some of these dol, these dollars in competition. And I think it, I think it's a fair thing to think about these dollars kind of in a global universe. And I want to make sure that we're not only spending dollars on programs like this, but also on programs that are widely used. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's fair to say. No, I mean, you, you restated yourself explicitly in a way that, it's not like I didn't hear you the first time. So kudos on doubling down on the argument, but I think, like, I, I think we're, we might be saying the same thing. This is a hard decision, and we have to consider these things as individual decisions and also as part of a whole. So I understand where you're coming from, we have some really big decisions to make in this year. It's going to be really tough. So, but I don't think that, um, I don't, I, I think that what you're saying is that this is a reminder that this is all part of a larger conversation. That's, I don't think anybody's missing that communication.
So in terms of direction staff will take away, we will put these proposed rates into the fee schedule you see on June 3rd, and I'm looking at Joseph, who's going to project manage the community survey. We're going to put questions in about both the food waste and food waste in that survey.
Great. Um, Councilor Coach Rabody, I wanted to give you a final chance to weigh in if you had anything else to add, but I think that is the direction we're going in this room.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, uh, the opportunity to, to say, I just, I just want to say that, what Council President said, um, I mean, that's pretty much, pretty much spot on. I appreciate, uh, bringing that up, and just the competition for the dollars, and, and, yeah. I just, I just, uh, I agree with the, with the comment he made.
Okay, thank you. We have only a ten minutes left for our dinner break. So anything else you need from us?
One thing I encourage you, when you do talk with Metro, find out what the overall impact could be on their, their new plan, because I think you guys are an absolute leader. I don't think that, and I think you guys are going to be a little shocked by how expensive it is.
Well, when they came to us before, it was two dollars a month, and it's, it's way more than that. Okay, well, I would encourage, um, Councilors Coach Rabody and Massey, who seem to be the, ready to go at Metro on this, too.
And, and if you want, call me up.
Thank you.
I get it, you know? I've been doing it for most of your thinking, Rob. There's a couple other mayors, Mayor Beaverton, Chief Barry, Adam. Laws, same, same, same topic, maybe, hoping to be thought about in the next few weeks. But I think that's something that, that really is being explained in detail for your overall impact.
Oh, we are adjourned. Up there.